Good evening, I'd like to call to order a city council workshop, June 1st, 2016, approximately 6:45. This is for interview for board applicants. Say a little bit about this, please. It's very simple, very casual. All I ask, though, is when you come up, take a seat over here and please speak into the mics, okay? Because we recorded and Councilman got, you know, to hear it better and we want her to be a part of this. Okay. Amy Neiman?
Yes.
Please, thank you. Come up, just take a seat. This is informal. Tell us a little bit about yourself and you've marked quite a few boards here and, floor is open.
Well, I'm sort of from here. I'm an Air Force brat, so I got here as a baby, went satellite high. And I love Florida. Love it. I have lived other places, but I told my husband, "You get me back to Florida. This is where I want to be," in Ballard County, not just Florida. But I like working with the environment. I'm concerned about the river and anything that I can do to help preserve our way of life is what I'm all about. I have two children, one granddaughter. I live in Satellite Beach, Antique Wood.
Okay. Well, thank you. You marked Sustainability, Beautification, Community Redevelopment and Sampson Island Board. Our Sustainability Board, which you marked first, we're, I'm not talking out loud here, we're trying to reconfigure that a little bit because we're getting so many people that are interested in this board that kind of started last year out of us doing town hall meetings. And it has expanded, it's an incredible board, it's a working board. You marked here Sustainability and the reason I'm asking this question is because we only have X number of members there, but we're looking at possibly doing subcommittees. Is that something you would still be interesting on to be on a subcommittee on the Sustainability because you did mark it number one?
And how would that be different from the main board?
The main board at this time is the voting board. But the number of projects that the Sustainability Committee is involved in and the amount of new things they want to do is going to take more than the seven-member board. And that's, and we're getting a lot of participation, so we want to try to get people on that board who want to be on the Sustainability.
And that has to do with the Indian River Lagoon and saving the environment?
That's, that is, yes, part of the Sustainability Board. There's a lot of different angles to that. Your yard, which again relates to the lagoon, but you marked that number one-
Yes.
-and we want to try to accommodate many people, but I just want you aware that right now there's not an opening, but there is, we do this, subcommittees.
Okay.
Okay? Any day of the week that's not convenient for you?
Wednesdays, I take my granddaughter to karate.
Okay. Most of our meetings are 7 o'clock?
Oh, then I'm good.
Okay, great. Further questions?
Amy, our Beautification Board, which you've marked as number two, meets on, I think it's Monday morning, isn't it?
Friday.
Friday. I'm sorry.
Friday at 9:00?
Yes. Are you available then?
Yes, ma'am, I'm retired.
Okay. Following on to what the mayor explained, with your background and your interest, I see a good placement for you on the Beautification Board at this time. There is going to be a good project coming to them soon in terms of helping us change the city code to incorporate more zero-scaping and environmentally friendly landscaping, and so I think you might find that interesting. And what I would say to you is if you would be willing to go on the Beautification Board for now, at the time when we are able to change the structure of the Sustainability Board, maybe at that time you would prefer to be appointed to a committee of that board, or you may want to just stay on the Beautification Board. How does that strike you in terms of at least an interim plan?
It sounds good to me. The only thing that sounds scary to me is I don't want to like be planting or digging or do labor, like, do you know what I mean?
Yes. Who's got working knowledge of the Beautification Board? John, speak to that.
Yeah, that board is somewhat of a technical board, meaning they have a lot of familiarity with plant choices. It's not a working board like the Sampson Island Board where they're out there, they're, it's probably one of the most casual boards next to the Red Board where they sit around a table just about where we stand right here. And they, you know, they do the lawn of the month, so they're out and about looking at the city and the plantings out there. They have a lot of programs, you know, plant sales that they do to raise money. So it's not a working board where you're out there digging holes.
Okay, good, because I'm past that.
I know what you mean.
Thank you. Any further questions?
So then, does that sound like something that interests me?
Yes, that sounds good.
I think that the Sampson Island Working Board would not be of interest to you.
That's more like hands-on.
Yes, that's working.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board also, I think, is less of a fit with what you've indicated you're interested in.
Okay. And also, I wanted you to be aware that the class that I had signed up for, the six-week class that I mentioned on my application, there was only five students, so it was canceled. And I spoke with the lady who teaches it and told her that I was disappointed and really wanted to take that because I was coming here to go before the board and that this was kind of a pivotal thing that I, you know, know about plants and all, more so than just what I know from growing up here, you know? Because obviously, I grew up here and what we're planting is not the right thing. So we need, we need knowledge to know what is the right thing. So I was disappointed that the class was canceled. She said she might not have another class until next spring.
Amy, what I would suggest to you, even if we appoint you to the Beautification Board, where I feel certain you'll find the other board members to be very helpful to you, attend these Sustainability Board meetings and just observe them.
Okay.
You know, they're open to the public. And, you know, watch what's going on, pick up pointers there. During citizen comments during those meetings, you can make comments or ask questions or whatever, and they may be able to guide you, point you in a direction that you find helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions?
All I want to say is, Amy, you know, I think between what the mayor said and what Marina said, I think we'll find a home for you. Just thank you for your willingness to serve and we'll probably find a place for you tonight at the end of the meeting, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to echo that. Thank you for coming and as I sit as part of that Beautification Board, I can tell you, it is an education. I've learned a lot by those folks. They come in there with plenty of picture books and explanation about native plants, Florida native plants, what are the better plants.
Yes.
So they have some very good discussions about that and as just what you just said, they talk about what we should be planning. And as a city, the good first step is, you know, we should lead by example and we should be planning the proper plants. And they do talk about that an awful lot and they make those type of decisions. So if you don't know, you'll get educated. They're very, well, they're very good at that. They're very, very good at teaching that type of stuff and you will get to play a part of helping us plant things that we should be planting and not stuff that we shouldn't be planting. So I think that would be a very good fit for you, at least to start and get in and get knowledgeable on boards and all that stuff. And it is, it is a very great group to be part of.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And again, it's an agenda item like I spoke to you before about that we take at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so I should just wait to hear from y'all?
Yes, we'll get ahold of you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay if you want to hear the meeting, but, okay. Margie Soliday? Thank you.
I have, my voice is kind of low. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome, Margie. Just tell us a little about yourself. I see you, you marked the Library Board as your passion.
Yes. I am from Southern Indiana. I live here on Amherst Circle. I graduated from, I have a two-year degree from Broward College in Fort Lauderdale. And I have retired from Motorola. I worked for Motorola for 24 years in different capacities, of course. And then I also, after I retired from Motorola, I went back to school when I was about 60 and took some medical courses and then I worked for four doctors for a few years. I, like I say, I live on Amherst Circle. Lost my husband about a month ago. And so I'm freer now to go to meetings than I was before because I took care of him for like nine years. We have two grown daughters and grandchildren, four grandchildren. And like I say, I'm recovering from Bob's death, but I do have an interest in becoming active in the city. I lived here now for almost 10 years and I love the meetings that you have. Been to the last two and I think they're very informative and I think you all do a great job.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I see here, you've been a volunteer at the Satellite Beach Library?
Yes. I actually started volunteering there before we moved down here full-time. And so I think I volunteered there for about seven or eight years. Keep in mind, I filled this form out last year, not this year, so I don't know if I checked any other committees or not. Did I?
No, but this Library Board was.
All right. But, you know, I would be willing to serve on another committee if you need somebody. Prefer the more technical type of work. Sampson Island, definitely out.
Thank you. Margie, thank you for volunteering. The only opening that I see on the Library Board is an alternate member. Would that be all right with you to fill an alternate position at this time?
It would be fine, yeah. Like I say, I'm just interested in getting involved in the city and, you know, I would be willing to serve on any committee that you feel fit in with.
That's all I have, thank you.
Margie, I'm sorry for the loss of your husband. I know that that's a difficult thing to go through. You did check only one board and that was the Library Board. Is that still your first preference?
Well, probably so, but I just, I could serve on another board if you think I would You know, Recreation or whatever, just, I can't recall other committees right now.
I believe there's an opening on the.
There is a primary and an alternate position both on the Recreation Board. You're not interested in Sampson's Island.
Definitely.
Planning and zoning, I don't think would interest you and that may be going away anyhow. Then Code Enforcement, they don't meet very often, Board Adjustment and Beautification, so it seems to me that by process of elimination, where we have vacancies, we would be down to the Beautification Board and the Recreation Board. Of those two, can you say off the top of your head if you have a preference?
Could you explain to me a little bit about what the Recreation Board does?
The Recreation Board makes recommendations for recreation programs in the city. Who has been the council liaison with that?
Dominic is.
Oh, Dominic.
He is Dominic.
Okay.
I know Dominic.
Frankly, I've never attended their meetings, but I know that they do have an advisory function, that they come up with recreation plans, programs, ideas, and they also help to implement recreation programs here in the city. They work very closely with our Recreation Director, who is just a fabulous young woman whom you would really enjoy working with. And then, of course, the Library Board, you actually have experience with that and you probably already know those board members.
I'm not sure who they are, no. I'm not sure who they are.
Okay.
I know the people that work at the library.
Well, if you don't have a preference, we'll flip a coin and appoint you to a board and if you find that you would prefer the other board, let us know and we can always make a reappointment.
All right, that's acceptable to me.
So how about if we start you with the Library Board, since you'll fit in immediately with that one, since you know the system and everything else?
Yes, that'll be fun.
Further questions? Margie, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
No, thanks.
Okay. Any further business on boards? Here are none. We'll adjourn and we'll start then. At the rate of the city council meeting in the city of Satellite Beach, June 1st, 2016, approximately 7:05. Please join me in a moment of silence in the lodge. Select a reason to leave the library of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for Moving on to Agenda Items 3, citizens' comments for non-agenda items. The floor is now open for non-agenda items. Here are none, bring it back to the council. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, city council comments. Who'd like to start?
I would just like Mr. Stone to know that today is Indy's 11th birthday.
I would just like to mention, over the Memorial Day weekend, I was out enjoying Satellite Beach, out there on the beach, and I saw our fire department out there with ATV pulling the watercraft, going up and down there. Looking good out there and I'm sure as busy as I heard it was over the weekend, especially with water rescues going on. And I know where I was at, it was packed full of people. So it was appreciated and I think everybody enjoyed seeing that. So that was a good move and we looked good out there. Thank you.
As you know, Mr. Mayor, just, I called earlier in the week, I just wanted to say I apologize for missing a couple of meetings here lately, in special meetings events we've had. I've just been swamped, but I think I'm pretty close to being back on track and shouldn't continue in that path, so thank you. That's all I have.
I have an interesting day today. We met with a group of scientists and we had Dwayne DePries among us. Dr. Ferguson back there was there and very interesting, there's a lot of new technology out there with the lagoon. And we toured some of our stormwater ponds and we toured them in the canals and the area out in the river. And it's going to be very interesting, their product, and we'll see if it fits into our system and, you know, makes it a little better for the city. But it was very interesting, very smart people on this project and I, you haven't had the chance to talk to Dwayne DePries, pretty interesting guy, really interesting guy. And I think it's going to take some time, but in the long run, I think it's going to work out pretty good. That's all I have. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that on June 14th, the 55+ Club will be holding their annual summer picnic at Pelican Beach Park from 11 to 2 at the large pavilion. You can get tickets for this at the David R. Schechter Community Center or at several of the 55+ Club functions and they are $10 per person. We are also having, again, annually, we do family fun swim nights now. We've done that for about three years now, I think, at the Satellite High School Pool and these nights are on June 17th, July 8th and July 22nd from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. and you can access these, the family's fun swim night for $5 per family. Regarding the BioWish meeting, which the mayor was just discussing, the city would be, in this instance, kind of the permitter of this new technology. So we will be bringing that, that project back to you. So far, what we've done is we've met with a team that, it's a company that creates biotechnology, it's a biotechnology that reduces nutrient loads in the, in any water body. So it could be in a stormwater pond. Right now, they're permitted in the U.S. to use the technology in septic tanks, but because if we use it on a stormwater pond or in the lagoon, it's an open system, so it would have to be approved by St. John's or Department of Environmental Protection and so on. So we are designing that test, so it'll be more like an experiment, if you will, and we're going to be focusing on the library pond. So in this instance, unfortunately, the state does not give us money to do these things. However, it's the only way to move into its new technology for nutrient reduction. It really is the only way. There's no grants, there's no, we don't get any credit for it, but if we don't at least try it, we'll never know it's going to work and we never take that step. So we are moving forward with designing an experiment, putting together a budget for that, and then if council approves, we will be submitting the permit to St. John's Water Management District to see if we could get a permit to try that technology on our ponds. I did get a phone call today that, that same company is visiting Coker Beach's dredging project tomorrow and that they will be, they have been asked to bring the same, they have a similar product that controls odors, so they are, the county is actually looking at the same product line to apply to the dredge material after the dredging because they are getting some complaints about the odor at the spoil site. So it is pretty exciting technology and we'll be pretty much on the forefront of trying to get that approved at the state. I did receive a thank you note regarding our Officer Housman and Officer McGann in our police department regarding the investigation of a hit and run. We also received another thank you note regarding Sergeant Anderson and Dispatcher Graziano for assisting an injured Pelican on the beach. And actually, I think I received another thank you note for Sergeant Anderson from a condo owner that, completely separate from this person, watched Sergeant Anderson also rescue the same Pelican and sent him a thank you note. We also received a thank you note from Our Father's House for the city's participation in the annual National Day of Prayer with our local churches and I've included that in your packet. And I wanted to let you know Assistant Suzanne, I mean Assistant City Manager Suzanne Sherman and I will be out of the office tomorrow and Friday, both of us will be, for the annual Florida City County Managers Association Conference in Orlando. It is just in Orlando, I will be available by phone and email, so I didn't really think it was necessary to appoint an acting city manager since I will be available anyway. If you feel different, let me know, and I will, but I don't, I didn't think it was really necessary to do that. I would like to invite the fire chief up to recognize the Fire Department and Indian River CrossFit for the fire truck pull.
JB and Cam and other guy. Real quick here, on March 26th, as part of the city's fundraiser for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, Indian River CrossFit and Satellite Beach Fire Department partnered together to do a fundraiser called a fire truck pull competition. When we were approached with this idea, we weren't exactly sure how we were going to pull it off. JB from Indian River CrossFit, we kind of said, "This is what we would like to do," and he came up with a crazy way of doing this. So if you'll do me a favor, I want to play the video that we have for this event here. Sorry, there's no speakers here, so, but you can just watch how this was done and I'll just give you a play-by-play here. So we did this on the 26th of March at the Schechter Center and this was a competition, I believe there were 20 teams consisting of four individuals. It was all female, co-ed and male teams. And it was a series of physical challenges that needed to be done in conjunction with pulling the fire truck approximately maybe 50 feet each time. But just kind of to lay this out here, this event was a spectacular hit. I think that when we looked there, we probably had approximately about 300, 350 people that were there. We had a food truck that was there and so, you know, some other things that were going on. And with that and with the help of Indian River CrossFit, we went through it and we were able to raise $2,188 for the American Cancer Society Relay for Event. That was accredited to Satellite Beach. Again, the music is out here, but what, to tell you what we had here is a series of activities to do. One of them was what we call a burpee and I used to be a CrossFitter and I quit doing CrossFit because of that, which is a series of basically a jumping jack and a push-up in one motion. And that was just the first part of it. The next part of it, after they pulled the truck, was picking up sandbags weighing 60 to 80 pounds, running them, throwing them over a six-foot wall, all the participants climbing over the wall, grabbing the bags, taking down and all the way back. And then the next phase of it was the 150-pound mannequin move and stuff. So to kind of lay this out here, the first teams that completed it, I think it was the first team was a female team and they completed the task in 14 minutes and 30 seconds or something in that nature. And we had a 15-minute cutoff mark. But then we had, as the teams started progressing throughout the day, the city of Palm Bay Fire Department and which I'll bring, Pam Drake, I know him, other guy, I don't know you, and two other individuals that were Palm Bay Fire Department. They had the winning time of 6 minutes and 20 seconds and change, I believe.
It's been a while, I forget.
Yeah. And, but what we'd like to do is that this is going to be an annual event for us, so we have a traveling cup with this. And so we're presenting this to Palm Bay Fire Department tonight. Next year, they'll have to come back and defend their honor. I will say that Satellite Beach had a showing and that's all I'm going to say. And we do have applications available. No. And, but like I said, JB, I really want to thank JB from Indian River CrossFit because and JB, would you like to say something here?
No, I mean, it's just, it was a short notice. We had about six weeks to put it together and it went without a hitch. I mean, it was very smooth. Weather participated, it was perfect weather that day, which is unbelievable here. I thought it was going to rain, it was supposed to, but we'd have done it in the rain anyway. So we're planning on doing it next year, hopefully we have some time because I put a 15, basically I put a 20-minute turnaround time on it with 15-minute cap, give five minutes for a reset. We're well ahead of that, so maybe next year we can have maybe 30 teams. And, you know, again, we're going to do it for the American Cancer Society and it's all about that. And these guys got to come and defend this trophy. So it's a traveling trophy and it's for Palm Bay Fire and Rescue, the co-ed champions. So you guys, you're up.
Go do the check.
One, two, three.
Awesome. Very much.
I just want to thank the city for letting me do this in this record center. They did a great job over there and help me next year. It'll, you know, run smoother, even smoother and we'll get some more Christmas out there, maybe raise some more money.
Right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you call a recess? I need a rest.
I just want to say, if I ever get stuck in a fire, you know, I hope they're the ones that.
Great. Chief, thank you very much. One.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Any questions for the city manager? Courtney, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, discuss take action on sustainability, board recommendation to amend code section conflicting with sustainability practices.
Good evening, everyone. Staff is looking for some direction on amending some various codes that may be in conflict with the sustainability practices that we're currently moving into. Couple examples that I cited, I'll just reference real quick, the beautification board, for instance, they do a real good job of putting together our beautifica, or I'm sorry, our landscape ordinance. The problem is, is the ordinance falls short of addressing zero scapeing and native plantings. So, the problem that we run into when we're dealing with complaints out there of unkept yards is sometimes it's a little difficult ascertaining the difference between an unkept yard and a native yard. And there are clearly some differences. I like to use the term zero scapeing versus zero scapeing, and some people that do zero scapeing think that that means not doing anything, but, and actually, it takes more work, you know, if you do it right. So, there's definitely some codes that could be modified within the landscape ordinance. Another one is, and I'm going to just reference, paraphrase this one here, this is in the drainage section of our land development regulations, "All single-family, two-family, new construction shall direct all surface water to the street." And it goes on to say more about that. But essentially, that is contrary to what we're trying to do, you know? We're trying to encourage rain barrels and swales and retention on-site and not discharge into the lagoons. So, that's clearly an example of where that needs to be changed. And then, last example is our stormwater utility ordinance. If you read that ordinance, it's actually a beautiful ordinance. It talks about the Indian River Lagoon and the things that should be done to protect the lagoon, things that we should be doing. Unfortunately, where it falls short is it lacks encouraging the participation of the community. And so, there are some things that's been floated around for years with regard to garner participation, such as discounts off the non-add承warum portion of their taxes, you know, where they do the retention and rain barrels and increase their pervious area. So, there's a lot of opportunities out there. It's a very difficult thing to actually implement. I know a lot of cities have tried, and there's a lot of nuances, so it certainly would be a work in progress. But the bottom line is, is there are codes out there that I think need to change with the times, and the times are green, and therefore, our ordinances need to be more green. So, again, staff is looking for direction on how to move forward with that.
Thank you. Questions from council?
One on this that you're going to bring us back, an ordinance on it. Is one of the intentions to get the beautification board and the sustainability board together with you to see where, because I sit on a liaison to the sustainability, and they're working on a lot of pretty cool stuff.
Yeah, I see.
To make sure we're getting the latest, you know, information in here.
There's a lot of boards that we're talking about. The planning's on your board, which would have to address, for instance, the drainage one, because it's in the LDRs. The beautification, for sure, sustainability, for sure, maybe even CPAB if there's some policy issues that are in conflict. So, at this point, I got to tell you that across the board, we need to look at our ordinances and start making some changes.
I'd like to move to direct stat, direct ordinance, amending code sections which conflict with sustainability practices.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gott, second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, I'll open up Agenda Item 6 for public comment. Floor is now open. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Councilman McGott.
Yes.
Mayor Catino.
Yes.
Motion passed. John, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, discuss take action on the school's resource officer contract renewal. Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I am requesting that the council consider this new current SRO contract for fiscal year 1617. It is virtually identical to the contracts that I've brought before you for the past however many years, 15 years or so. The only addition is, this is a slight increase of, it's $800 increase per SRO. We have two, so there'll be two contracts, which is a total of $1,600 as an increase, and goes except for the one year. And the only other issue is, there's a clause in there that has been added for public records retention, and it's just mirroring the state law, and they just added it in there just to make sure that it was clear and that people understood their proper roles. And other than that, it's the same contract that we've been doing for years.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Motion to authorize city manager to approve the 1617 school resource officer contract renewal.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Any discussion from council? Hearing none at this time, open up for public comment for Agenda Item 7. Hearing none, back to council. Lenore?
Councilman McGott, yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Mayor Catino.
Yes. Motion passes.
Chief, great, great job those guys do. I mean, it was nice, I was at the graduation of Satellite, and they had a lot of nice things to say to students about all and stuff there that I thought was, showed that this program definitely has helped.
It does, and Mr. Mayor, if I could just make, I misspoke, it's $700 increase, not eight, so it's a $1,400 total increase, so I looked at the wrong number. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's why I wanted it on the record.
Chief, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, discuss take action on street sweeping agreement between the City of Satellite Beach and USA Services of Florida Inc. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On your May 18th, 2016 meeting, you did approve a contract for solid waste services with Waste Management Inc. of Florida. Those negotiations basically resulted in us removing the street sweeping subcontracting out of their contract. We actually figured out that we were the only city in Brevard County that actually subcontracted our street sweeping through Waste Management. I don't know why we did that, but we ended up thinking that if we had moved that out, we would be able to lower rates for our residents, and in doing that, we were able to offset the general fund impact of that contract by negotiating with Waste Management to take over the city's cost of our waste pickup. So, that actually offset the cost of that. So, the cities currently, prior to us renegotiating our Waste Management contract, paid for our city-owned property's waste pickup in approximately $20,000, $20,156 annually, and the street sweeping costs will be approximately around $20,000 in cost. So, it is pretty much a wash in terms of the general fund impact, but a savings in the rates to our residents citywide. So, with that, we are recommending that we also include street sweeping services within the Montecito subdivision, which did not occur before, and we all, we will also be sweeping the city-owned parking lots at Pelican Beach Park Police Department and Public Works Departments in City Hall.
Thank you. I have two questions. Montecito, yes, there in our city, is there any problem because those streets are not city streets? Those are private roads?
No, because they're publicly accessed.
Okay.
They're public access roads, they're just privately maintained.
And, Jim, the contract, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 8. Hearing none, back to council. Motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the street sweeping contract with USA Services of Florida.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilman McGott, yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Mayor Catino.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 9, discuss take action on the recommendation to withdraw from the agreement with Brevard County Fire Rescue for the shared use of a county ladder truck. Chief, or Courtney, who would like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. In May 2013, the city council authorized the staff to enter into a ladder truck agreement, partnership with Brevard County for the shared use of the county-owned ladder truck. Pretty much, the ladder truck would be parked in the city station, the city would be, would share staff that fire truck. We would also share in the cost of some of the maintenance of the fire truck. So, a lot of times, our staff would be deployed to other fires throughout the county, but the truck would be accessible to the city in return. Since then, we think that since there's been kind of a shift in staff at the county level, as well as a shift in, we got a new county commissioner, we believe that from a political standpoint, it's no longer a good idea to continue on with this partnership, and we feel that in order to adequately plan for our resources, we should be looking at ending the partnership because of the precariousness of the partnership. So, for example, Scott Ellis brought up in an email, when the county is always looking for funding because they have issues, obviously, from a revenue standpoint, and he brought up that this ladder truck agreement, if it was dissolved, would enable the county to recoup $500,000 in money. And that had written recently, the county commissioner wanted to research that. Since we had brought this up, and it became, it came on your agenda, the county manager had contacted me to let me know that Commissioner Smith would not be bringing a suggestion to the board to terminate the contract. However, I believe that's because this was on your agenda, and I don't think that that will likely continue. I think this ladder truck agreement will be continually brought up as an issue by Scott Ellis and, you know, that group of people. And because we have, we were planning on purchasing or actually re-chassising our squad vehicle, if we had lost, if the ladder truck was pulled out of our fire station without us having adequate planning to, time to plan, we would have to rush to buy a truck that had the capacity, pumping capacity, correct, and he's probably better at saying this than I am, to meet the standard of ISO standard that we have now. And just so we don't get put in that position, we believe that it's in our best interest to be able to control that timing of losing the ladder truck and being able to purchase a truck that we can use in the long run and not have to depend on another agency to provide those services to us and to our residents. There are many partnerships throughout the entire county, with cities between Brevard County, with trucks, with shared staffing agreements and things like that, but for some reason, the agreement with Satellite Beach is brought up over and over and over again, for some political reason that I don't understand, but it is what it is, and I think from our perspective and wanting to adequately plan for the future and being able to fund things without having to rush particularly high-ticket items like a fire truck, we believe that it's in our best interest to terminate the partnership and move forward with purchasing our own vehicles for, you know, for the long term.
Thank you. Questions?
When would we be purchasing our own vehicles?
I think we are planning for it in the next budget year, but we're looking now, financing in the types of vehicles that we would.
We're currently in the early planning phases of it, and just to kind of recap, in our long-range, our capital replacement plan, we already had budgeted for the, what I'll call a re-chassis of Squad 55, and part of that re-chassis was going to include adding pump capacity, because our ISO Insurance Service Office requirements for our fire insurance rating require Satellite Beach Fire Department to be able to have 2,250 gallons of pumping capacity on any fire. We met that capacity easily with Brevard County and with the ladder truck being there, but if that ladder truck was to ever leave, we would be very precarious with our ISO rating. And so, it's very difficult for I or any other staff member to try to do long-range planning when we have an agreement that seems to be always facilitating, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. And I think our challenge is this, is where would we be at if this contract was pulled in December, mid-budget year? So, for that, you know, at the end of the day, here's what's going to happen. We're going to go back to the pre-ladder agreement, which meant that there is going to be a ladder truck still on the barrier island. The only difference is, is that it'll be a two-minute response time difference, and I can assure you that that specifically, that tactic that we need with the ladder truck is not the initial tactic. So, for safety to the citizens and things of that nature, we were a great fire department before this agreement, we're a great fire department after the agreement. So, it's just more in a long-term planning, and let's just, you know, I hate to say this because I really have enjoyed the staff that's there, I've enjoyed the partnership, I think it represented what is good about local and county governments working together, but unfortunately, it is what it is.
That's a 45-day agreement, correct?
I believe that that may be the answer, yes.
So, anytime, every day, we're 45 days away, in theory, from losing that truck. I mean, somebody's saying, either us or the county going, time's up, we want it, we have 45 days. Correct?
I can't remember if it's actually a 45-day agreement, but I don't, but I actually, but the answer is, is yes, the agreement can be terminated. I don't think that there's a minimum date that's there, so literally, I think they could say, "Hey, tomorrow." But whether it's 45 days or 90 days, it's, that's short-term, you know? We need long-term consistency.
My question here is, we talk of safety, all right? The agreement we have for the interlocal, where it will ensure us to have a ladder truck on this island, for the ladder truck being available to.
Well, let me go back, I can't speak to specific, well, Brevard County will be doing post-disagreement, however, I think it's reasonable to assume is this, is that prior to that ladder truck agreement, we always had a ladder truck responding to us, whether it came from Station 63 in North Canova, whether we were utilizing Indian Harbor Beach, or if I used the City of Melbourne, we will always have a ladder truck available for our use.
And that's part of the interlocal agreement?
That is part of our mutual aid agreements between all of the cities in Brevard County.
I just want, again, make sure that, and again, I would rather be able to plan and not be caught mid-year, and I have kept up with this with Courtney and some of the emails and texts going back and forth, and what my worry is just that, that we get stuck in the middle of the year, that somebody comes up and just says in October, after we do our budget, that we're no longer going to support this. And I think the texts and emails that were going back and forth would have sounded better if some different language was used, and I think the language was used the way it was because, I'm not sure they want to make the commitment, so.
So, we're trying to build certainty into our fire service planning so that we're not caught at the whims of some toxic politics.
That's exactly, that is it clearly. We need certainty, we need to be able to control our destiny as we look at growth in the city with the north projects. I can't, we really have to have that level of certainty.
And because of the mutual aid agreements, we are not disadvantaging our residents by not having that truck in our fire station.
No, ma'am.
And isn't there also an issue about the community paramedic expansion?
You know, I didn't, I wasn't able to talk with him much about that, so I'm not real sure.
I think the two items are mutually exclusive.
Okay. So, this, again, we get certified by the county for your, the medical end of our, correct? Our EMS?
Yes, we have, we have a, what we call a certificate of public needing necessity for the county, for us to be able to provide paramedic-level services.
That wouldn't be in jeopardy?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, chief, I just, you know, I remember how much work you and your staff and all city hall did putting this whole thing together to make it happen. I'm sorry to see it go away, because you guys worked really hard, and it seemed like a good relationship y'all had.
And Frank, listen, let me, let me say to the Brevard County staff that we've had, if I had six openings, there would be six people I would be wanting to hire. Fantastic people, great disposition, they represented. They represented their organization very well and they complemented our organization well too.
And that was pretty much known out in the community too. And like I said, the way you guys have worked very hard to make this all happen and get it all, you know, kudos to you, I'm sorry to see it go this way, but I don't, I'm like with Courtney, I don't see any other direction it can go, so.
I think, yeah, I mean, I would echo the fact that the, from an implementation standpoint, on the boots-on-the-ground type scenario, it went very well. They all worked very well together.
Yeah.
Very few issues. So, from an operational standpoint, it was very good. We just really don't want to see our city being used as a volley in attacks from a political standpoint for a partnership that we really don't need. I mean, it's not a necessity for our community. It's great to have, but it's not a necessity. What is a necessity is that we have notice to adequately plan for capital needs. We plan out fire truck purchases and these big, you know, the bigger items, three, four years in advance. So, we can't be caught like that in the middle of a budget year to have to go back and redo something that expensive. It's just, it's not feasible for us to do. And I'm very concerned with the attitudes currently at the county level, on the higher level regarding the partnership. And I'm not real sure it's in our best interest to keep going.
So, it's time to stop the games.
Yeah.
Jim, from the legal end and the contract or anything, other than give them notice, do you find anything that's going to put hindrance to us?
Well, actually, the thing is, this particular agreement, I don't know what the original one said about the termination, but this one just says that there's a term until May 31, 2018. But if they want us to get out of it, then we can obviously mutually agree to terminate the agreement no matter what.
I just want to make sure.
My recollection was there was a termination provision in the original agreement. I don't remember what it was.
The parties can always mutually agree to terminate the contract.
You can only do that anyway. But this agreement only amends the items that are amended. So, but my recollection was there was a termination.
And it was either 45 or 90 days, I forget the.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
Okay.
And that's just the minimum too. You can give 180 days if you want to do that, if we're looking for.
I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to give notice to Brevard County that the City of Satellite Beach wishes to withdraw from the May 2013 amendment to the automatic aid agreement regarding the use of the county ladder truck.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Gott, seconded by Vice Mayor Brymer. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 9.
John Fergus, 135 Maple. People have alluded, but I don't think I heard specifics. A key point here, I believe, is the people at the upper level, sitting on the commission, county fire chief, they're not the people that signed the agreement, that were here when that agreement was entered into. You've had a change of personnel. And so, those who thought this was a good agreement aren't there anymore. And from what I understand, folks are not getting good vibes, I guess, is the way to put it. And, yeah, we just can't afford to be in this limbo business.
Public comments still open?
Okay, fine, Jason. My long-term memory still works pretty good. I recall distinctly I was in support of this project, not because I live in a condo, but because I worried about the people that live in the condos of an upper level. I'm trying to sort all this out as we're discussing it. And it seems like to me that the detractions are that evil politics is trying to get his nose into Satellite Beach's business. And of course, the county's business at the same time. I fully support Fire Chief's recommendations to withdraw from this contract and to proceed to be an independent city. And I know it's costly, but I'd rather be an independent city that has somebody to dictate to us what we do with our tax money and what our councilmen, elected councilpeople should tell tale to the evil that's trying to get in here. And, you know, that's, my statement is because I'm trying to get, get around the facts and I'm not too sure I've got everything, but I think I've got most of it.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Here are no further, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I need to amend my motion.
Okay.
This is on the advice of the city attorney. A move that we authorize the city manager to notify Brevard County that the city wishes to withdraw from the automatic aid agreement as amended in March 2013.
I amend that second.
Motion by Councilman Gott, amended by Councilman, amended by Councilman Gott, seconded by Vice Mayor Brymer. I have a question then. The automatic aid agreement. We are amending that, correct? Is that what you're saying in your?
No, we have, we have an agreement that was amended.
Okay.
And that's what the amended motion is.
So, but this will not affect our mutual aid at all?
No.
We have two agreements. One's mutual aid and one's automatic aid. The automatic aid agreement is what includes the fire, the ladder truck section. And we amended that automatic aid agreement in 2013 to include the ladder truck. So, we're basically asking to withdraw for that, from that section.
So, make sure.
Why, Captain?
Yeah, let me, I just make sure we got the record straight here. And the city manager's correct. There are two specific agreements, and let's just take an opportunity to refresh. We have a county-wide mutual aid agreement that was established well in the 1990s. And that was between all of the cities and counties. Essentially, what it says is that when you need help, we'll send it. And when we need to help you, and vice versa. And there's no financial reimbursement between the services. The distinction between an automatic agreement is really just a matter of word. It is just a specific agreement between us and Brevard County that says specifically, these types of calls, we will automatically go to. And there was some trade-off areas because we had agreed to cover part of South Merritt Island and that. So, but would we amend that, our auto-aid agreement as originally adopted, will still be in effect?
That's okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman McGod?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, discuss, take action on a reusable bag initiative for the City of Satellite Beach in partnership with the Surf Rider Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh is going to come up here. Josh Paz is one of our board members on the Sustainability Board. And he is also a member of Surf Rider Foundation. So, he has been assisting us in putting together the reusable bag initiative. So, I'm going to let him explain the partnership. And then, I will go through with you some of the recommendations of the, on the city side of how we would implement it from the city's standpoint.
Just to give you some quick facts, we're talking about these guys here, these little usable bags, these plastic bags we all get. One key fact that came across my desk this week, and stop with me. 11% of beach litter are these, 11%.
Josh, I need you to lean forward and speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? 11% of the beach litter is this, what I'm holding right here. And not only is it a nuisance in the fact that we don't want litter on our beach, the issue is this does not biodegrade, it photodegrades. And what this means in a nutshell is the sun beats on it and it breaks from a bag into tiny little particles that end up in our oceans. I don't know if you can see this graph from here, I can put this, submit this for you guys later. The currents of the ocean work in such a way where these little particles end up forming what have been called continents of plastic. Now, that's a bit of a misnomer because it's not really a continent, you can see. What we're talking about, go to another visual here, is the density. That's the, right here, you're seeing versus the blue. How much of these little particles are in these areas of the ocean? And this is just a catastrophe for the environment. It hurts everything from photosynthesis on up. Long story short, little fish eats the particle, bigger fish eats that, bigger fish eats that. You go get some mahi, now you're eating some plastic bag, that's no good. So, what do we do? How do we solve this? A simple solution, and we've already done in partnership with Melbourne Beach last summer, is to bake some of these reusable bags, what you're seeing right here. Not only does this address the issue of getting these out of our community as much as we possibly can, but more importantly, this is a great opportunity to introduce our board and introduce what we're trying to do to the community itself. We could, for example, brand this, not only with our logo, but with our partners, such as the Women's Club and Lions Club, will also express interest in this project. And this all becomes an educational effort now for the people of Satellite Beach to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And ideally, to donate some money to, and purchase more of these bags and keep this entire campaign going right on up the beach.
So, this is how we would move forward. The board recommended that what we would do is the Surf Rider Foundation and the city would partner to purchase the bags. We were looking at two different style bags. One is the Chico-style bag that kind of folds up into a little ball. And then, the other bag style is the grocery-style bags, which are those. So, those are bigger. And what we would be doing is, oh, thank you.
This is the other style, Chief, according to, goes in this little small pouch and then expands and will fold back.
And both of the bags can be printed with a logo. The Sustainability Board just approved their logo at their last meeting. And. And since we have specifically tried to negotiate or did negotiate with Waste Management to increase our recycling fund revenue, quite frankly, to fund projects like this, we are recommending to fund this project with a $5,000 budget, that it would be the max. We did express, get expressed interest from the Satellite Beach Women's Club to participate in this project as their community project for this coming year. So, I will be presenting to the board for that, to see if they'd be interested in that. We have not approached the Lions Club yet, but we would like to do that as well. So, get some of our community groups involved. The Women's Club did say that if they took it on as a project, then we could have a booth at the Marketplace event to distribute bags and kind of have a Sustainability Board booth there. And then, we were also looking at having a float in the parade. So, we already have designs going out in our heads about that. And then, what we would, we would also like to do is do a Facebook challenge with the community and work with Publix to try to reduce Publix's purchase of plastic bags. So, we would want to set a goal with Publix. And Publix did express interest already at the local level to participate. And they have sent that request up the ladder. And so, we're waiting to hear back from them. They said that they really didn't anticipate a problem with it. And they were supportive of wanting to be part of the community effort. So, what we would want to do is establish kind of a baseline with them of what they use now, create like maybe a 20% reduction goal. And then, at the end, create a, you know, kind of a, if you can get this done, you know, we can do this specific community project. And I know one of the projects that our community had been asking for, particularly on Facebook, when we looked at doing, putting in the playground at the sports park, was putting a canvas overhang. And maybe we can attach that as a, we'll put this in if we can get to this goal. So, that was one of the ideas that we had for our Facebook challenge. And, you know, really put it out there, market the effort with the community of try to, try to get people to really use the bags and, you know, be in Publix and take pictures of them, of people using them and putting on Facebook and things like that. So, we were, a lot of ideas have been floated around and we're starting to put the program together. But of course, we need your approval to do that.
How does this impact Publix?
For Publix, if they were to participate, it would actually save them money from having to buy bags.
And what do you mean by if they would participate? What are the issues there?
Well, I, we would want them to participate in telling us how many bags they purchase in a month or whatever. And then, you know, tell us, keep track of it and tell us how many they're purchasing the next month after the challenge is over. Yeah, exactly. And then, you know, letting us put a booth out front and stuff like that, you know? So, we have like a list of things we want to do with Publix. And, but we haven't been able to sit down yet and meet with them on that until they get permission from their upper people to do that. But the manager is very interested in the project.
Are these bags for sale or are they, we're going to give them away?
What we would do is ask for donations for the Chico-style bags particularly because they are more expensive, so that would be a cost. But we basically give people a choice of which bag they would want, you know, when we're handing them out. But that would be part of the initiative is, you know, we call attention to the project by providing that to the community and putting our logos on it and getting them out there. Come get your free bag, you know, stuff like that.
I just want to say, because I said on Sustainability Liaison, incredible board, great job. I mean, the ideas that come up every meeting is really great work. And it seems to be a pretty fun board at those meetings. But, so I sat in a meeting and I think it's great. You read anything on plastics, it's pretty scary, so.
Anyway, other further questions from council?
I'd like to approve the reusable bag initiative with the Surf Rider Foundation and allocate $5,000 from the Recycling Trust Fund.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott, seconded by Councilman Osmer. This time, open up Agenda Item 10 for public comment. Here are none, bring it back to council. Any further comments?
Actually, look, I think this is a good initiative, probably less controversial way than some cities, you know, have actually mandated that you don't do it or charge for bags every time you come to the store, which I think it is a good thing, but tends to meet with resistance where this is kind of more of an educational approach. Let's just try to get everybody on board with it, with, again, educating and get people to sway that way, I think just goes a lot, lot better. I think from a community point of view, you get a lot less pushback if you're not trying to tell somebody they have to do this, but try to make them aware and educate them and make them feel good about what they're about to do. I've experienced this in different places, traveling to San Francisco is one of those places because I've known, you travel there, you don't bring your bag with you and you go to the store, they charge you a quarter for every bag that you fill up. And it's mandated, you have to do it that way. So, I do have my bags, I have both styles like that, and I enjoy them. I think this is a very good initiative, we should go this way.
Great. Further comments? Lenore?
Very nice thought, thank you. Appreciate it.
Did you ask for citizen?
I did.
Lenore?
You did ask for citizen?
I did.
Okay, and it was Osmer who seconded that?
Yes, yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman McGod?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, discuss, take action on Love Our Lagoon Sign Campaign in partnership with Anglers for Conservation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to let Mike Conine, right, that's Mike? Okay, good. Conine, sorry. Come up and explain the partnership and then the staff will take over on how we're going to do that.
Good evening. Mike Conine, I'm not saying my address because I don't live in Satellite Beach. I'm a Melbourne-born and raised resident, lifelong angler. I'm the executive director of the Anglers for Conservation. I sit on the steering committee of the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. And I've just been appointed as a citizen advisory council member of the Indian River Lagoon National Issuary Program. From outside of looking in, I want to applaud the City of Satellite Beach for the things that you guys do. They're excellent. You know, you guys are a role model city. We have, this is our prototype for the Love Our Lagoon campaign. It doesn't.